And thanks so much for your continuous stay on the Joy News Channel. We're heading towards Parliament right now because the committee set up to investigate allegations made by the minority against the Finance Minister is about to begin its work.
Oh God, grant us a vision of our country, fair as it might be, a country of righteousness, where none shall wrong his neighbor, a country of plenty, where evil and poverty shall be done away with, a country of brotherhood, where all success shall be founded on service and honor shall be given to the deserving, a country of peace, where government shall rest on the will of the people and the love for the common good. Bless the efforts of those who struggle to make this vision a daily reality, inspire and strengthen our people, that they may give time, thought and sacrifice to speed the day of the coming beauty of Ghana and Africa. Amen.
Thank you very much, Doc. I'm putting off my own phone, so I don't get interrupted. Okay, we met here this morning for reasons I reckon everybody is aware of. Speaker of Parliament mandated this, bear with me, I'm switching this to know. Manded this committee to investigate, well actually, to debate, because the debate was started on the floor of the House, I think on the Thursday or Friday, was the, was it Thursday? What, but was it a Thursday or Friday? Thursday, yes. But so that we give the individuals involved the opportunity to be properly heard, the speaker ruled that the debate be transferred to this committee room. So we ensure that as far as we scrupulously can afford, we ensure that fairness prevails and that each and everybody is properly heard. It was also the case that there doesn't seem to be a precedent for what we have met here today to undertake, the function that we undertaken this morning. The speaker therefore asked us to put together our own structures accordingly, the committee met yesterday and fashioned out how this meeting is going to play out in terms of our procedures, our rules and how we effectively discharge our responsibilities. We have agreed on what to do. We decided that this matter has a shape of, sort of, it has elements of criminal responsibilities, it has elements of political, it has elements of civil. So we have decided on some procedures, but the most important thing is that we have decided that there must be, I mean, a evidential basis for the allegations that were made on the floor on that occasion, also the Thursday. I mean, those of you who have been able to peruse our voter, what do you call it, the, not the hazard, well, the hazard, not, yeah, vote and procedure, maybe also the hazard. You would recall that there were bare allegations which were set out and which constituted the basis of the debate on the floor on that occasion. We accordingly decided that we give the proponents of the motion the opportunity to present, to ask the committee and of course, more importantly, to the particular individual involved in this matter, the specific details of what is it that they have by way of evidence to buttress the bare bones that were laid out in Parliament on Thursday. We accordingly have decided to ask them today to settle the ball rolling, give the specifics as I've indicated. We then suggested that the Minister of Finance may then have the hold of tomorrow if, that's, we think that might be appropriate for his needs, but it also depends on what he suggests. To have tomorrow to look at the issues, to discuss with lawyers and then to come here on Thursday to present his side of the argument. This essentially are the matters, the conclusions that we came to yesterday when the committee met. I got a co-chairman, my friend who almost lost me some mantle, not on top of my back, we are not friends yet, maybe after this precedence we'll be friends again. So it's my co-chairman. So Dominique, essentially I've set up what is it that we agreed on yesterday. So add something to it and then let's see.
Thank you very much, Honorable KT Hamon and the co-chair of this ad hoc committee. I think the synopsis that has been given by the Honorable KT Hamon captures succinctly the agreement that the committee has come to with respect to practice and procedure before the committee, before the committee for purposes of the hearing. As he has said, in terms of Article 82/4 of the Constitution, during the debate on the motion for the vote of censure, the Finance Minister, who was the subject matter of the motion, is entitled to be heard during the debate. Now, Mr. Speaker thought that in the absence of the Finance Minister on that day at plenary when the debate was taking place, it was only appropriate in accordance with Order 106, one of the standing orders of Parliament, to refer the motion to a committee of Parliament. Now, honorable members, ladies and gentlemen, committees of Parliament are creatures of the Constitution and in terms of Article 103/3 of the Constitution, they may inquire into the affairs of ministries, departments and agencies and conduct investigations. I believe that it is in respect of this broad grant of constitutional authority that Mr. Speaker has asked this committee to sit and hear out the Finance Minister in his defense. But before we do that, it is only important that the proponents of the motion, the movers of the motion, I would say that they are not accusers of the Finance Minister. They moved the motion for a vote of censure because in their estimation, and that is in the estimation of the minority, the Finance Minister was not performing his public duties, you know, as expected of him under the law and constitution of this country. That is the firm belief of every person who has, I mean, attended their signature through the request for a vote of censure, for a motion of vote of censure. And so they are not accusers of the Finance Minister, they just think that the president should not be keeping him in place as our Finance Minister. And therefore, what we have set out is to give them the opportunity to avail the Finance Minister, you know, the evidence that is being adused against him in respect of all the serving grounds that had been stated in the motion paper. And then thereafter, we'll give the Finance Minister and/or his lawyers the opportunity to be heard in his defense. That is what the Constitution expects of us in terms of Article 82/4. And so today's procedure kickstarts the process of, you know, hearing the evidence to be adused by the proponents of the motion and then we can have the Finance Minister to be heard in his defense. So basically that's why we are here, ladies and gentlemen, honorable members of the, of the committee. So the Finance Minister has been invited, he is here present and we will begin by introducing the members of the committee so that the general public, the Ghanaian public will know who is on the committee and who is executing this duty on behalf of the Parliament of the Republic of Ghana. So Honorable KT Hamon, who will start?
Well, I guess you introduce yourself first. You just finished speaking, so it'd be good if you introduce yourself.
No problem. My name is Dominic Akuritenga Ayene. I am the MP for Bolga East constituency and a co-chair of the committee.
I propose to introduce myself last, so if you go.
Thank you for chairman for the opportunity. My name is Andrew Kofi Ejapamessa, the MP for Sekendi and Deputy Minister for Energy, a member of the committee.
Bernard Ahiafor, MP for Acachi South and a member of the committee.
Patrick Bouamoukankwe Central, a member of the committee.
Kwame Anye Duentri, Asante Achim Central, a member of the committee.
Senator Chairman Rawlings, Member of Parliament, Cloty Colley, constituency and a member of the committee.
I am Samuel Okujeto Ablakwa, Member of Parliament for the Good People of North Town in the Volta Region, a member of the committee.
I expect the committee to take parliamentary notice of my name and constituency. Yes, colleagues, we've just been handed over copies of a letter which has been addressed to the clerk and it's from the minister in question. Well, I understand that we left out our clerk. Mr. Clerk, you want to introduce yourself?
My name is Camilo Poiemang, I'm the clerk to the committee.
You'll be introduced?
Assisted by Dr. Ernest Daffo, he's the one distributing.
Is that it? All right, we'll go on with the letter. Yes, we have this letter from the Minister of Finance, the subject of this discussion. I guess it is with a matter that both Dominique and I have discussed. He refers to the letters which have been sent to him dated respectively as, what, the fourteenth and the fifteenth and raises the matter of the specifics of the allegations which are made against him. I don't intend to read the entire gamut of it, but essentially he's asking for the particulars which we just referred to. He's wondering how is it fair that he's able to properly state his position when he only has the skeletal basis of the allegations. So he accordingly claims our indulgence for the full particulars of the facts in support of each of the allegations contained in this letter and then of course, the relevant supporting evidential document. He thinks this is not too much to ask for and that it's in the interest of justice that the committee sees to this request. Considering all that both Dominique and I have said, we really don't think they should be much of a difficulty, but let's see how we go, we go, we go by this. Originally, as I indicated, committee's view was for the hearing to start and for the Minister of Finance to sit in and then thereafter, we would have ensured that the transcript of the hearing was transmitted to him and his lawyers. But it seems to me that it's a rather neat way suggested by him that we ask from the proponents of the motion, what is it that they have and which we can, in all fairness, hand over to the minister and his team to consider and then we can take it from there.
Yeah, the Honorable Minority Leader and the ranking member on finance, are there any documents you would be relying on for purposes of making your case for the vote of censure, the motion?
Yeah, Chairman, co-chairman and very distinguished members of the committee to whom the speaker have referred, the matter of censorship of the Honorable Ken Oforiata too, we are here. I've seen both of you use the word allegations. In many instances, we are not just alleging, I mean, if I quote the President of the Republic, President Nana Dudankwa states that borrowing of 50 years and per record, that is not an allegation, just to draw your attention. So don't reduce our censorship motion to allegations. We take, we take. No, 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 no. Honorable member, I would respect, let's get something right here. No, 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 one second, bear with me. Can you, can you turn off the thing? Yes, okay. On the, on the Thursday, the 10th of November, you had the privilege to raise the motion on the floor of the House. I don't have the hazard here, but whoever was there heard you loud and clear. The motion was based on the specific issues, one, two, three, four, five. Those are by any account allegations which are not fleshed by any evidential documentary evidence, I mean, not fleshed up. So they are essentially allegations, we are saying by virtue, by the provisions of the relevant laws, constitution or whatever, natural justice. In fact, I read yesterday, 1773, a guy said that even God gave Adam the opportunity to explain himself when there was the accusation about the, what, what was it there? Was it a mango or the fruit or whatever? Yeah, so in fact, so it is, it's bare allegation as we see. So if you have anything to please give us, don't let us.
As appreciated, so Chairman, I'm Haruna Idrissu, Member of Parliament, Tamale South, Minority Leader, accompanied by the Honorable Atu Forson.
Honorable, no, excuse me, yeah. First of all, there was a preliminary question about documents in relation to the letter, but when, yes, but no, he can't do the oath before that.
Chairman, thank you very much. I invoked Article 82 of the 1992 Constitution, which provides and gives Parliament the authority and mandate to call ministers to order by exercising the power of a vote of censure, to which the minister has every right, under the same Article 82/4, to debate himself during the debate. I'm not aware that the minister has been denied that opportunity by Parliament or by me. So Chairman, to proceed, I'm tendering in evidence parliamentary debates, Thursday 10th, November 2022, in evidence for, to guide you.
Wait a minute, do we have a list? Do we have a list of?
Chairman, I'm tendering my first evidence.
What, what, do you have a list?
By every record parliamentary practice, it's an authority to be relied on. We will make reference to the 1992 Constitution, the Public Financial Management Act, the Fiscal Responsibility Act, the Bank of Ghana Act and breaches they run and we need evidence to support his breaches of it. We are simply advocating strongly that his performance is incredibly disappointing, that he's not fit to be.
No, but wait a minute.
Did any of you buy?
Honorable, Haruna, Haruna, calm down. I mean, don't, sorry, we wouldn't allow this meeting to degenerate, to generate into any kind of fuss, let's calm down. We know why we are here, you made the motion, you moved it on the floor, the speaker is referred it to this committee, we've got to be, be calm about it and then we're going to take political issues here, let's deal with it the way it is. Yeah, we will let you. Our colleague wanted to make a point, his hand was always up.
Chairman, thank you. I was wondering how the proponent is beginning to tender when he hasn't given his warning. In any event, I thought that before we proceed on that route, we'd make some determination as regards the request that is contained in the letter that the Finance Minister has submitted.
We're going, we're going to deal with that. I wanted him to settle down, he was already highfalutin, but we're going to do that.
Okay, so, yeah, so the question I asked was in relation to documents to be tendered and the Honorable Minority Leader has listed a number of documents that will be tendered in support of the grounds, if I may change, in support of the grounds. They seem to me to be, all of them, public documents, there are documents in the public domain, are they not? Okay. Okay, yeah, just, just, I, yeah, on that point, on that point, okay.
Microphones, I'm not sure if you are privileged to some information that we do not have. You are, what you just said, you said that the Minority Leader had actually given a list of the documents in terms of, he, he was saying that I intend to rely on this, I intend to rely on this, but what I will propose is that let the proponents introduce themselves with the greater respect. We have the Finance Minister here, we cannot assume, if he's accompanied by anybody, let's have the introduction and then after that, this letter, we can attend to this letter, decide on this letter, whether we are giving him.
Thank you. I mean, I think we, we already mentioned the fact that the Finance Minister is here, so fact of his formal introduction, he is not here today to give evidence or anything, so fact of his formal introduction, I'm not sure, but if you insist, Honorable Finance Minister, does it, does he have to rise up or what, to be recognized or what are you suggesting? What, sit down to be recognized or rise up to be recognized, which one?
Whether he's here in his own capacity or is accompanied by a lawyer, we need to.
Finance Minister, your presence is recognized. Who else is with you, whose presence has to be recognized? The Honorable, I don't know, who, Mr. Gabi Otudaku, yes, hello, I see that you are around, Deputy Finance Minister number two or three, are you three or two? Or what? And then who else? He's, she's our colleague, so she's, okay, Abra, you also have to be, yes, Abra, you are here. Does that satisfy that requirement? I'm talking to you, yeah, does it satisfy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Good, so let's get the, the issue, you see, we'll do, the swearing of the oath and whatever would come when we get to the meat of it. There is a preliminary issue that we are trying to address here, isn't it? So Haruna, listen, you know, I don't stand on the protocols and all the honorable, honorable and those things, I don't deal with those, so what is Haruna is Haruna, you know, so Atu is Atu, that's how we're going to deal with this matter today.
Why is Diary's?
Absolutely, yeah.
My, I'm at his friend Diro.
So that's how we're going to deal with this.
Yes, we can.
Yeah, okay, you, you had, you had our colleague fairly well, you were rattling through it, I was confused myself, so what is the list?
Atu Forson will introduce himself and then start.
I've already introduced Atu, Atu as we did introduce, you know, so let's get on with it.
Let him introduce himself, Chairman.
Mr. Speaker said the other day that somebody could take on the contract and do it on your behalf, you remember that, so Atu, unless of course you resist the fact that I do it for you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, my name is Cassiel Atu Forson, I'm here with the Minority Leader. The document we'll be relying upon today for the purposes of the hearing will be one
Do you have a list? Do you have a list?
No, I'm reading them to you.
You don't have a printed?
No, I've already sent to the clerk, when the clerk sent me a message via email and the Minority Leader, we responded via the same WhatsApp and then gave the information, so I'm just reading them to you. Okay, for the records and it's important for the records.
Mr. Chairman, please, seated right with a clerk, can he respond to that fact, whether he's received a list of documents to be relied on from the proponents of the motion? Thank you, very important.
Yeah, the clerk, read what we sent to you.
For now, I've, I'm yet to receive information regarding that, we've had some discussions and I asked for it, but he promised sending it, I've not received, maybe.
That is wrong, I sent you, you sent us a letter via WhatsApp and as part of the letter, at 14:38 yesterday, I sent you four links, four links, one is the 2020 staff report, I also sent you 20, of the staff report of the IMF is here, and the same, 14:39, I sent you 2021 staff report of IMF, I also sent you 2020, 2019 staff report, I sent you the Fiscal Responsibility Act 20, Act 982, and then the budget statement for 2019, 2020, 2021 and 2022. These are documents we sent to you. You also asked us to write it formally and what I sent to you is that since you, you sent to us via WhatsApp, I'm responding via WhatsApp with those data and then when we come here, we tender them in evidence. So that was my response to you and this is what the communication I had with you. So if you can read exactly the details of the communication that was sent to you.
Mr. Chairman, it's, that is true, the account Honorable Atu indicated, but if he will check his WhatsApp record, we had written formally to him in the letter, but because it was late, so we took a picture of the letter and sent to him. So he sent me a list of documents and I remember reminding him that, yes, I have that, but because we wrote formally to you, it will be appropriate that you list those, all those documents in a formal letter, which he promised to do, but in actual fact, he sent some of those items individually.
So what, you were requiring, waiting for the response in a formal letter?
A formal letter, yes. Because, because it's a record.
We are here, we can lead and let you take record of what we intend to rely on, one, Chairman, 1992 Constitution in particular Article 82, the PIAC report 2021.
Minority Leader, Minority Leader. I'm listening, go on, I'm listening, Haruna.
Chairman and colleagues, we rely on the Fiscal Responsibility Act of 2018, Act 982, in particular, the section two and four, which emphasizes the vote of censure as captured in Article 82. We would also rely on the Minister's budget policy statement for 2022, referring him through 2021, 2019. Then we intend to, as the Honorable Atu Forson have said, reference the staff, the International Monetary Fund Article Four Consultation Staff Review for 2019 and would do so, request for disbursement, staff report International Monetary Fund, under the Rapid Credit Facility 2021 and then 2022 and then breaches of the, breaches of the Bank of Ghana Act, Act 612 of 2002.
Haruna, we're getting confused here, we're getting confused here, calm down, we're getting confused here. Co-chairman, don't you think a neat way of going about this is to give them some time to, yeah, to, yeah, to get this in, not some 30 minutes, whatever, we'll do, so that we really understand, he's running through, I'm maybe only able to write Article, what the, Act 982 and then 2022, 2021, I've written budget against it, the red is doing the Speedy Gonzali, I can't get it, yeah, yes, Atu, all the time.
No, Atu, Atu, before you come in, okay, two of my members have their hands up, the Honorable Okujeto and then Honorable Senator Rawlings.
Your members?
Two of the members of the committee.
Chairman, co-chairman, if I can have your attention, it is important to acknowledge that the proponents are not refusing to make available documents that they will be relying on. The Honorable Minority Leader, who is a distinguished leader of this house, is providing the list. I do know that at committee meetings and even at plenary, Hansard records proceedings. If you as chair cannot follow, the clerks and the Hansard department.
That's rather patronizing. Would you want to rephrase it?
The point is that we have a tradition in this house.
I take exception, would you want to phrase it, rephrase it?
Rephrase what, if I can be clear?
If you as a chairman cannot follow it.
All right, let me rephrase that. So if the chair is having some difficulty, probably with the pace, you said there's Speedy Gonzalez, if I'm quoting you correctly. I'm only drawing attention that we have traditions and practices in this house. There is a clerk, there is Hansard department, there.
What is the use of the clerk, the Hansard department, when the human individuals who are supposed to be in charge cannot follow what is going on because of?
This is a, this is a house of records.
A house of records includes the human beings, the physical human beings.
Chair, I, I don't think that we should be so rigid and, you know, uh, we are, we are, we are.
By simply asking him to put it in a different way.
It's beginning to appear as if we want to just place impediments in the way.
Not at all, not at all, not at all. And if your view is that we're not following and for that reason, what are the clerk and the Hansard should take over? Hansard should take over from the human beings?
Honorable Katie Harmon, you know that there are practices and traditions in this house. There are those whose duty it is, and they are paid by the taxpayer, to record proceedings. Hansard department, the clerks are table. So the list they are providing.
I mean, we got the point.
We have, we, we have already said, we've already said that we will provide the transcripts of today's proceedings to the Honorable Finance Minister. So I don't think that we should, we should belabor the point, let's make progress.
Listen, they've brought a letter in which they're making the same point that we ourselves have been struggling with. How do we make sure that as fairness, they got the evidence? The letter is simply saying that what, I want the particular, the specifics. I'm happy they started telling us what is that they have, I seen a bundle of those things over there. But look at the way he was going on about it, da, 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 we couldn't follow. Now you are referring me to Hansard, we'll get a Hansard tomorrow, what we do today before the Hansard comes tomorrow.
They, you know, they record proceedings live, there, there are traditions we follow in this house, Honorable Katie, you know.
Let, let, let's see, let's try again, let's try again, calm down.
Honorable, Honorable Katie, there are Hans, Honorable Liz, Zanato Rollins, and then Honorable Kame, you may do. Okay, and then Honorable Ania, Ania Forfes, and then Honorable Pati Guama and Mesa.
Thank you, thank you, co-chair, if I may. I think the bottom line is, you're asking for a list, they're here, this would not be the first time. We're in real time, they can offer the list and it can be typed out while we're here, so that we can proceed. We're already one hour behind schedule. This is something that's of great importance, not just to the House, but to the country. So I think it's important that we, we facilitate the process as much as possible. Nobody's refusing to tender any documents in. So if you need a list now, that can be typed out and presented to you while the, the, the proceedings can, you know, carry on.
Honorable Kame, you may do.
Mr. Chairman, apart from we ourselves deciding and then now informing the proponents that we would want to have the list of documents that they intend to rely upon. The would-be respondent has also written that he would want to get the list of documents that they intend to rely upon. It is not for the respondent alone. We as members of the committee, we must be informed of the documents they intend to rely upon. And I think this is tried. If he needs some minutes or some hours to actually put this list together, I think that the coaches, put yourself, uh, put your heads together and allow them the opportunity to give their list out, where it's not a matter of reading out the list. We may miss some of that. So if you have the lists and the clerk wrote to.
Kame, I think you've made, you've made a point, ad nauseam.
The clerk has written, they should respond to that.
Can, can we hear the Honorable Ania for, on this matter?
Co-chairs, thank you very much for the opportunity. Co-chairs, I, I have read the letter emanating from the finance, uh, minister making some requests. One, full particulars of the facts in support of the allegation. Then two, the relevant documents or evidence in support of the allegation. Order eighty-two, uh, Article eighty-two of the nineteen ninety-two Constitution is very clear that the minister during the debate must be heard. Now, opportunity is now being given for the minister to be heard. However, we want these allegations to be repeated before the minister. Whatever evidence that is available would be given, the supporting documents would be made available and nobody is pointing a loaded gun at the minister to respond today. So the minister can take the evidence, can take the documents that will be tendered before the committee, look at it and tell the committee that give me two hours, give me one day, give me two days to take a look at the evidence and the documents made available for the committee and myself to enable the minister to be heard in debate of the motion.
Okay, Honorable Pati Guama.
Chairman, I think Bernard has made my point, thank you.
Honorable, uh, Eya Pameza.
Chairman, I, I have a contrary view. Because this proceedings that we are undertaking, like the minister rightfully indicated, is a quasi judicial proceeding. Now, the purpose for which disclosures and exchange of documents are made is clearly known to all of us. It's to prevent the element of surprise. Now, I fail to see how the list that was contained in the letter that was submitted to the minister in themselves constitute facts for which he can be asked or called upon to respond to. We can take our time and read.
We have business spots and world news coming up shortly. We're live on our DTT because we're free to air, we are coming to you from our studios in Kokumlemli. We're on, uh, DSTV Channel four two-one and Go TV Channel one four-four. We are a home of independent, fearless and credible journalism. Right now, let's go back to Parliament where there is, uh, a public hearing on the essential motion against the Finance Minister Ken Oforiata, which is underway in Parliament.
Report for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. We'll also be relying on P I C reports for nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two. Uh, uh, P I C report, Public Interest and Accountability Committee, also established by an act of Parliament. So we'll be relying on their report for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two half-year report. We'll also be relying on the Fiscal Responsibility Act twenty eighteen, Act nine eighty-two. We'll be looking at the Public Financial Management Act and the Petroleum Revenue Management Act as well. We also have the Hansards of Parliament that we'll be relying on, uh, Hansard of Parliament, particularly the one on the twenty-first of June, twenty twenty-two. We'll be relying on the Constitution of the Republic of Ghana and the Standing Orders of Parliament to make our case. Occasionally, we'll be, also be looking at information, um, that we have also been able to compile from an analyst, from analyst, international recognized analyst on their website, and we'll make reference to those websites.
Do you have the specific websites?
Um, a typical one has to do with the Goldman Sachs website and we'll share the links with you. We'll be looking at Bloomberg website to be sharing some links with you, things we've seen Bloomberg publishes, and, um, we'll make reference to those ones. Every other document that we'll present to you will give you evidence of where this information is coming from, thank you.
And Chairman, we'll make reference to the address to the nation by President Nana Adudankwa himself on the economy on Sunday, thirty of October, twenty twenty-two. His maiden state of the nation address to Parliament would make reference to it. And the Petroleum Revenue Management Act will also be a reference document, thank you, Chair.
Uh, um, uh, Mr. Finance Minister, I was resisting my colleague calling on you because I said that you'd not been introduced, uh, into, um, the, you were only formally mentioned, um, so we can acknowledge your presence. But it's, it's an issue which, if you had come with your lawyer, and I'm beginning to see that a lawyer is raising his hand up there. So maybe acknowledging, Mr. Otidako, yes, uh, let's, let's hear, what is it that you want to contribute to?
Uh, Mr. Otidako, um, if you can use the mic, because, uh, yes.
Mrs. Chairman, um, my name is Asa Otidako, represent Mr. Ken Oforiata. Our issue is simple. One, per Article twenty-three of the Constitution, since it's a quasi judicial process, our client deserves fair hearing. Indeed, in the event of matters not going well, he faces potentially the severest punishment that a minister can get, which is removal. So all we are asking for are two things. You can give us a whole list of the documents, which we don't have physically. But that list will lead to an expedition which is wide, particularly when we have one week here. So I think that the first part of our request, which is full particulars of the facts in support of each of the allegations contained in the letter, must be first adhered to. Because, Mrs. Chairman, if you look at the first charge, if I may, it says this impeccable conflict of interest, ensuring that directly, he directly benefits from Ghana's economic wars, as his companies receive commissions and other unethical contractual advantage, particularly from Ghana's debt overhang. This is wide, there are no particulars to this charge. We do not know all the hundreds of bonds that have been raised, we do not know which one we are talking about. If you go further, let me just skip to the last charge, charge seven. It says gross mismanagement of the Ghanaian economy, which has occasioned untrue and unprecedented hardship. If you give us P I C report, if you give us staff reports of twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, with what you respect, it would take us about maybe two months to go through all that. And it would not be fair to the Minnesota Highlands to be ambushed and right here, without any preparation, to start answering questions. And in any event, Mrs. Chairman, if we do not constrain the accusers within the four walls of what they intend.
I think your objection will be called an acuser.
Well, um, how would you like?
Very, very strongly, I mean, if I put a present where he intends to say that.
I do apologize, I do apologize.
That's not an allegation, we are defendants.
I do apologize, may I, may I just, I do apologize.
And then Chairman, if you can give one minute, you see.
Uh, uh, let me just finish.
Change the first, change the two hundred and fifty-five here, and give us evidence that they are buying, benefited, benefited one hundred and fifty-nine million between twenty seventeen, twenty twenty-one from bonds issued and from bullwheat. And then Chairman, as I said, National Cathedral, we see a warrant signed by the minister for one year.
Okay, okay, let, let, let. Mrs. Chairman, first of all, my apologies for, for calling you an acuser. Um, Mrs. Chairman, all we are asking for, and if I just, let me just repeat, before we start this, this proceeding, all we are asking for, in the interest of justice, is that we should be furnished with the full particulars of the facts in support of each of the allegations contained in the letter. And then, the supporting documents.
If I may, I may, uh, keep in here, um, some of the documents listed, in fact, all the documents listed are public documents. And, um, I mean, some of them are authored by the Finance Minister himself. They are, they've been authored or they are in the custody of the Finance Minister himself, right? So I would, um, disagree with you if you were to suggest that maybe in respect of those documents, the Finance Minister needs a lot of time to study them, especially when he is the author of the documents. And some of them, under the laws of this country, report, no, they are. So there, yeah, can we, can you land and then we can, we can make a ruling on this?
My, my landing is pretty simple, Mrs. Chairman, the documents are fine. But before we even be able to look into the documents, we want the charges to be complete with the particulars. That's all we're asking, thank you.
The, the other thing, um, that I want to point out, uh, both to, um, the, you, I mean, you and your client and as well as the Ghanaian people, is that these are not charges. That this is essentially a constitutional political process that grounds on a, in a motion cannot constitute charges. And this is not a quasi judicial process. In fact, it is not an Article twenty-three process, because this committee is not an administrative body. If you read the language of Article twenty-three, it is very clear that administrative bodies, okay, must act with fairness and reasonableness in the decisions that they take. We are not an administrative body, we are a political body mandated with a task, you know, of investigating, making fact findings with respect to the grounds stipulated in the motion. That is the essential task that we are, we are here to execute this morning. So I would, uh, advise that or caution against the use of charges, we are not charging the Finance Minister. And in fact, I do not think that the resultant, uh, um, document can be, can be, can be the basis of any criminal charge in a court of computer jurisdiction.
Can we use the phrase allegations, they are allegations, aren't they?
They are grounds, grounds, the grounds of the motion.
Yeah, the making allegations. All right, so we stick to the grounds, but we don't see allegations.
Yeah, they're supporting grounds.
No, 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 not.
They're supporting evidence for the grounds stipulated in the motion, yes.
So supporting evidence for the.
The grounds stipulated in the motion.
Okay, so but let's deal with this application and then we, we can.
Mrs. Chairman, I take your point, so let's stick to the, the word you use, fairness, okay? In the interest of fairness, whether there are grounds or there are charges, it is important that we furnish the client with the particulars of each ground, that's, that's all. Before this process.
That, that, that can be contested, so I think you said enough, we can contest it.
But Chairman, what I said there, did you read, did you read seven for us? You said gross mismanagement of the Ghanaian economy, which has occasioned and told an unprecedented hardship, did I hear that from you? Did you buy petrol on your way coming here or?
Yes, Honorable Minority, Honorable Minority Leader, you are, you are cross-examining the council. I, I think, uh, we will protect him from such cross-examination, yes. Honorable Council, you are, you are, you are discharged from, uh, you, you are deceased, thank you, yes, okay. Okay.
Actually, why not let him sit there? Remember that we need him again. Does he have to go and come back there?
Well, you can, okay, he's conferring with his client. All right.
Mr. Coach Chairman, I think, sorry. Yeah, what was then we thinking about is to give you the opportunity to take the documents that you referred to and then specifically point to the paragraphs you're talking about, who are discussing, for example, what do you call it? A budget of a thousand pages, for example. Where is he going to look at? You tell us that you'll be looking at budget of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty two to a media, isn't it? Read all of that. Oh, Chairman.
So let's think about one hour.
Chairman.
One hour is too long.
No.
You can do this in five minutes.
I thought you are going to dictate to the 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 big boys here, the two of us here, what time? We decide on the time. You don't decide on the time.
Mr. Chairman, just to tell you that we don't need one hour to do this. It can be done in five minutes.
We, we, we in charge.
No, we are the ones to do the job and we don't need that one hour.
I thought with that as you can do this job.
Mr. Chairman, just to tell you that five minutes is.
I told you overruled.
Because we have it here.
I told you overruled. We need one hour.
Chairman, but just to elucidate for your purposes. For instance, if we say to this committee that we will be making reference to report of Auditor General. When you give us the opportunity to speak to the Auditor General, we then in our submission, as we sit here, would have referred you to page ten of the Editor General's report, where the Minister of Finance reports two billion and then Controller reports three billion.
Counselor, Mr. Ochidako, can you come over, please?
With a variance, so we would have spoken to the issues based on what is contained in official documents.
Ochidako, kindly, kindly, yeah, approach, come here.
In live the probing of the case made against the Finance Minister Kenno Furata, who is demanding full evidence from the minority to prepare his defense. As you may know, the Constitution nineteen ninety two, Article eighty two, speaks about the fact that you should give the minister who is going through a central motion the opportunity to defend himself. So as you can see, there is some tetatet going on at the venue. Earlier, you heard Harun Idrissu, who is minority leader, trying to defend what's going on. Now, there's been, there are two chairmen of this eight-member committee. You can see Katie Hammond, MP for Addansia Soka, and you can see also in the picture Dominic Ayini, who is former interior minister, they are chairing this committee. You had earlier Gabi Otredakun demanding that the minority produce detailed evidence of all the allegations they are making against Kenno Furata, the Finance Minister, before he can prepare his defense to all the allegations. You also heard Harun Idrissu trying to defend that. There's been quite a banter between Katie Hammond and Haruna. Let's take you back. You can see Dr. Dominic Ayini making a point there. The demand is that the minority proves or gives full evidence of what they are accusing.
Honorable Atufosin, I just perused through your list on twelve, which of the P I C reports? He said.
Twenty twenty one, twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty one, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one.
And probably the half-year report for twenty twenty two. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. And then half-year report. Half-year twenty twenty two. Counsel, are you ready to address us?
Yes, Mrs. Chairman. I've I've spoken to the client. And we will consent to the guidance and wisdom of the Chair.
Okay. All right, that's fine. Thank you very much for obliging. Now, honorable members.
Thank you.
We will bring proceedings to a start, no, not to a close, by swearing in the proponents of the motion. So, clerk, please go ahead and swear in the proponents of the motion.
Mrs. Chairman, for clarity, I am not part of the, I'm not a proponent of the motion. So should I still, because of the word you use, am I still going to be sworn?
You are going to give evidence before this committee.
So, but because of the word you use, that's why I want to get clarity, because for the proponent of the motion. It was moved by a seconded by Honorable Muntaka.
The motion, the motion, for all practical purposes, emanated from the minority. Exactly. And 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 in fact, I myself am a proponent of the motion despite the fact that I'm sitting here. All right. Thank you.
He wanted to dance. So kindly repeat after me. I.
I, Harun Idrissu.
Solemnly swear.
Swear by the almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give.
That the evidence I shall give.
Before this committee.
Before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me.
So help me, God.
Thank you very much, Honorable Atufosin.
Kindly repeat after me. I.
I, Casiel Atufosin.
Swear by the almighty God.
Swear by the almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give.
That the evidence I shall give.
Before this committee.
Before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Thank you very much. Honorable Minority Leader and Honorable Atufosin, the ranking member on finance. You are aware that this is a referral from Mr. Speaker pursuant to Order one oh six one of the standing orders of this House. You are also aware that on the tenth day of November, that is Thursday, November tenth, twenty twenty two, the Honorable Minority Leader did move his motion before the House. And that is the same motion that has been referred to us. It's reported in the hands at at paragraph eighty-three of the hazard of that day. Your duty here is to lead evidence before the committee in respect of each of the grounds stipulated in your motion. And so I would give you the opportunity, I mean, the chairs will give you the opportunity to execute that duty. I'm told that the Honorable Minority Leader will first make a statement and then the Honorable Atufosin will then proceed with leading the evidence in support of each of the grounds. So.
Thank you very much. Chairman, if I have your indulgence, understandably, I would like to proceed by tendering in parliamentary debate official report of tenth November twenty twenty two in evidence, which is the motion I move, which was equally seconded by the whip, the Honorable Muntaka, expecting full debate. And Chairman, as I said, we are dissatisfied with the performance of the Honorable Minister for Finance and we think that he is not competent enough to continue to hold office as Ghana's minister responsible for finance because, Chairman, as we have said, so since I took counsel on on seven, gross mismanagement of the Ghanaian economy, which has occasioned.
No, wait a minute.
I'm just taking one.
Sorry, what are you doing now?
Go on, it's settled. Honorable Minority Leader, may you proceed?
So, Chairman, we have grounds. And grounds, I'll just take two and yield the floor to the Honorable Minister, Honorable Atufosin. And as I said, let me start with National Cathedral. I mean, Ghana, very respected religious country where there is coexistence, both Muslims and Christians alike. Nobody is against the president promising and honoring God with the cathedral for the purpose of the expression of their Christian faith. But when public resources is used for that purpose, it needs us to call into question. So the clerk of the committee, I just gave you a warrant signed by the Honorable Minister for Finance for some amount of money for the cathedral. And and that's what you are holding, the first document, just give me that. So I'll tender this in evidence and say that we are aware that by warrant signed by Honorable Kenno Furata Minister, twenty ninth October twenty twenty two, an expenditure of one hundred and forty-two million, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred Ghana cedis was allocated for the construction of the cathedral. Want to know when parliamentary approval was granted for this purpose. And then also I refer to the Auditor, the Auditor General's report. And Chairman, what we say, for instance, I just pick two, as I said, I yield to the Honorable Atufosin. Fiscal recklessness. Today, what is Ghana's national debt position? We have been told by the World Bank and IMF that our national debt stock exceeds four hundred and fifty billion Ghana cedis. As was inherited in twenty seventeen, it was one hundred and twenty billion Ghana cedis. Servicing debt, the amount of money we now spend as a country to service debt at end of year twenty twenty one was thirty-seven billion Ghana cedis, ballooning to forty-five billion estimated by close of this year. This can only be as a result of irresponsible borrowing. You have borrowed.
So where are we getting all these figures? You rented a few figures here. Where are we getting them from?
The Minister's statement and then from the World Bank.
They are there when you go to find.
The World Bank even says that by end of this year, GDP was likely to be ninety-nine percent of GDP. So I'll yield that, I just end here, the Honorable Atufosin.
May I come in? And, Mr. Chair, I'll be grateful if I could be directed on what of the points is he speaking on? Because I.
Turn the thunder. We we keep on pleading. We wouldn't allow this meeting to degenerate. It wouldn't be fair. It would be fair. You should catch the attention of the Chair, raise a point, let's be clear that we we know what we are going to going to raise. We can't be cutting across like that. We discussed all of this yesterday. It can't be right.
And honorable members, please allow the proponents of the motion to flow and then note down any critical questions that you want to ask them. Okay, so please.
Mr. Coach Chairman, I, I, Harun, I thought that you were starting with the National Cathedral. Have you finished with it and moved away from that?
Yeah, I'm done.
You're done with the National Cathedral?
Yes, I've given you my evidence on that.
That is the the document that you threw.
Yes, yes. And Chairman, on hardship, I'm sure yourself, you pay for fuel, you buy fish.
I don't buy fuel, so don't talk about it. I don't buy fuel.
I don't buy fuel. While we are led here that there is excruciating hardships and people's real income have been washed away by inflation. And Chairman, Chairman, I'm on inflation. And on inflation, I'm not quoting any person but the President of the Republic on his Sunday address to the country, when the president himself stated. And Chairman, with your indulgence, I quote, "The whole world has been taken aback by the speed with which inflation has eaten away people's incomes. A coincidence we can small have experienced over this year alone the highest rise in cost of living over a generation, the highest rise in government borrowing, highest rise in government borrowing. These are the worst of President Nana Adudankwa Okufuado. In over fifty years, the highest rise in inflation for forty years. This inflation has contributed to the unacceptable hardships that Ghanaians are going through. And we are holding the Honorable Minister for Finance wholly and solely responsible for that. The worst of the present, I continue. The steepest depreciation in their currency to the US dollar over the last thirty years. Twenty seventeen, one US dollar was to four point two Ghana cedis. Today, one US dollar is fifteen Ghana cedis. That has meaning for businesses in Ghana. The cost of doing business is unacceptably high for businesses. The pharmaceutical industry is complaining because it affects their imports and they are made to pay more. The depreciation of the city has affected even Malala women who cannot trade effectively because they've had to lose and lose because this is a consequence of their borrowing. Also, you now have what you call, as we reference Bank of Ghana Act. The Bank of Ghana has exceeded its emergency support and financing for government for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, who lead the exact figures. But the law, the Bank of Ghana Act, Chairman, that I may refer to, says that the minister is allowed to do up to ten percent of previous year revenue. It's five percent. I'm generous, even give them ten percent. So if you have ninety billion. So if you have 90 billion, uh, 5% of it would have given you 4.5 billion. So if you spent up to 9.5 billion or even, uh, you spend up to 15.9 billion, that is in breach of the Ghana, Bank of Ghana Act. And that itself is contributing to the increase in inflation, which is affecting real incomes. So Chairman, let me at this point thank you for appearing, as I quote the Auditor General report. And you see, we are saying that the minister must give us data to rely on. And I'm holding here the report of the Auditor General of the Public Accounts of Ghana, General Government for the Year and the 31st December 2021. And I refer to page 10, Paragraph on Annual Budget Funding Amount, reported by the Ministry of Finance itself, amounts to 2,006,122,607, whereas Controller and Counter General reported an amount of 3.3 billion. So a variance of 1.3 billion. Somebody must explain this to the Ghanaian public, why you have this discrepancy.
This is in respect of which one?
Annual Budget Funding Amount, ABFA.
No, that's in relation to which of the, um, the.
Paragraph 23, Paragraph 23. Paragraph 23, who observed significant differences in the revenue figures reported by the Controller and Counter General.
No, this is in support of which of the, I called them allegations. I think, Coach Chairman, says we shouldn't say allegations. Which one, uh, which of the numbered, uh?
Number four, and there I yield to the Honorable Atu Fosin, deliberate and dishonest misreporting of economic data to Parliament. So when you have him say 2 billion, Controller says 3 billion, who are we to believe? Then the Honorable Atu Fosin will come in and show you a graph to, uh, expand more on force. So I yield to Atu Fosin. I'll come back again. I've referred to the Auditor General's report, I've made comment and then prices of goods, you said when you were coming, you didn't buy anything.
You, you bought the petrol for me, don't worry, you bought it in my cars. I didn't buy, don't worry, bought it for me.
Okay, the Honorable Atu Fosin, can we, may we hear you? Counsel, you have an objection?
Yes, um, Mrs. Chairman. The, the list that have been provided does not include the Auditor, Auditor General's report. And this is the, the danger that we pointed out. If we are not careful.
You mentioned the first.
There will be surprises at every turn of these proceedings. And as we sit here, the Finance Minister of the Republic has a responsibility to be working on the budget, to be negotiating on the IMF program that the whole country is waiting for. And if you're gonna stay here and spring surprises at every turn. Mrs. Chairman, it may be difficult for us.
Uh, Honorable Counsel, Honorable Counsel, the, the, um, Honorable Minority Leader did mention the Auditor General's report. I think it is, I mean, uh, that in the typing that there was an omission. It was mentioned to, it was mentioned to the committee. So, uh, please, your, yes.
Chairman, I have a concern. And, uh, if the counsel to the Finance Minister can give me his ear. The counsel to the Finance Minister, I don't know if you heard him. He's been telling us that the Finance Minister has work to do. He has to lead IMF negotiations, prepare the budget, as though what is going on here is not important. Some of us take strong, strong exception. This is an important constitutional assignment, very important uh, to Parliament and to the Ghanaian people. I, I think that such, such expressions, without due respect, very condescending. And as though, as though we are wasting their time. Totally unacceptable.
Do I take it that, that comment was posited in a specific contest? I thought what he meant was that by maybe suggesting that we should go on the front lick of their, their own to look for all this, why not stick us to the specific? But we pointed it out to him that, well, I maybe.
No, Mr. Chairman, this is a very important national exercise.
Can I conclude? Yes, he thought that you directing him to go out of the box, out of the contest. But we think we indicated to him that we wrote it down. I have it as a number five. So maybe if it is submitted on this, we pointed out to him that it is.
Yeah, he, he, he has a valid point, but to add that, they have an IMF negotiations and budget, as if, as if what's happening here is some circus, without due respect.
If it was, it was suggested to them that go out and look for this, look for this, look for that. And he's suggesting it might take tab of the IMF. Let, 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 it's all right, we can, we can, we can allow, we can allow.
No, Mr. Chairman, he must withdraw that. This is a very important exercise. No, 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 I, I take strong exception to that, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I, I think, I think, I think the Honorable Member has a very legitimate point. Uh, that has been made with respect to the importance of this exercise, that, um, this is a constitutional exercise, a referral from the, the Speaker of Parliament. Uh, the, the entire country, Ghanaian people, expect us to return a report to Mr. Speaker with respect to the grounds stipulated in the motion for the Honorable House to debate and to take a decision. And this is so important that we cannot, uh, you know, I mean, be seen to be trivializing it. So that is a very legitimate point. Um, yes, honorable member.
Without, without due respect to the Chair, I do not think that what the counsel for, uh, Finance Minister said is in any way condescending. Obviously, the statement that he made was clearly in context. Okay, you've sent the man with a letter that says that he should come and respond to seven specific items. One, despicable conflict of interest, ensuring.
Honorable, honorable member, you don't, you don't need, you don't, no, no, you don't, you don't need to go through all the serving grounds, no. Honorable, honorable member, yes.
Let me make my point. And, and so if he appears before you and request that these grounds that you've listed and submitted to him by letter does not disclose any specific allegations of facts for him to respond. And then all of a sudden, he's been given a list, which in my view, does not relate to any fact whatsoever. And he's being called upon to.
Honorable member, please, you are, you are prejudging, you are prejudging the content. You are, no, 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 you are prejudging the content. Please, honorable member, you are, you are, you are, you are out of order. You are prejudging the content of the documents to be submitted. Okay? No, 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 honorable member, you are out of order. Can we, can we, can we listen? No, Honorable Minority Leader, can we listen to the Honorable Atu Fosin? Uh, Counsel, thank you very much. You, you can, if you want to be conferring with your client, uh, why don't you bring your client, uh? Which, which one?
Condescending, no, 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 Mr. Chairman. No, Mr. Chairman, no, no.
Yeah.
Please, Chairman. You, you, Coach, you were not, you were not happy with an expression I used. And I, and I, and I did what gentlemen do.
I, I, no, no, I, I'm taking the, the, the time to explain. As far as I'm concerned, the statement was made in a specific contest. You, you've given me a list to go through. My view, and when I say my, I'm now putting on the shoe of, uh, the, of Counsel on the other side.
So Chair, you can't make that point without talking about the more important things you have doing.
No, 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 so if you said that you throw all this at me and you expect that, what you also know very well, that I've got A, B, C, D to do, World Bank this and this and that. I, uh, Mr. Mr. Ojorako, is it difficult for you to rephrase it?
Oh, not at all, not at all. Um, this is an important exercise and we're only asking for direction so that we can finish it on time. That's all.
I think that's what I said, okay, uh, Atu.
Um, Chairman, thank you very much. Chairman, I will be, um, concentrating on, um, item four of the motion, five, six and seven. Ground four, five, six and seven, that's my job today. So I, I will, I will, I will take you through one by one.
Honorable Atu Fosin. Chairman, for, I've set the tone. I'll come back on every single issue. That's why I tended my motion in evidence. I'll pick paragraph by paragraph, expand it and provide needed material evidence. But I yield now to those other grounds.
No, 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 Harun, I mean, you're, you're confusing this, this, this committee. I thought you decided to take on the first one.
Yes, I have.
Now, but you seem to be suggesting that you come back to them.
No, the Honorable Atu Fosin will speak to the grounds he's mentioned.
Uh huh. And then what?
At any time you need me, I'll come back.
What, we need you?
Yes.
Uh, that's fair. I thought you of your own volition was going to force yourself back on us again.
I've just ended my motion in evidence, you haven't stated it yet. His study will provide you an opportunity to hear me more.
Call you if you want to, if we need you. Yeah, that's fine, that's fair. If we need you, if we don't need you, we'll say good afternoon to you.
The Honorable Atu Fosin.
Mr. Chairman, um, to start with, I'll, I'll start with, um, item four, where we have here written deliberate and dishonest misreporting of economic data to Parliament. Um, Chairman, you, we are aware and we have seen that since 2018, governments since 2018 has been misreporting economic data to Parliament with the aim of misleading Parliament and investor community. The misreporting to Parliament was mainly to inform Parliament that the Finance Minister has complied with the Fiscal Responsibility Act, Act 2018, Act, um, Act 982, particularly Section 7, when that was not the case. Mr. Chairman, if I may refer you to the, uh, Section 4, Section 4. Mr. Chairman, if I may refer you to the Fiscal Responsibility Act 2018, Act 8, 982, Act 982. So Chairman, um, the Section 1 of the Fiscal Responsibility Act, uh, which deals with the object of the act is clear. It says that the object of this act is to provide for fiscal responsibility rules and to ensure macroeconomic stability and debt sustainability. One, two, says that for the purposes of Section 1, fiscal responsibility rules shall, A, correct distorted incentives, B, ensure fiscal discipline, C, prevent fiscal slippages, and D, improve fiscal and debt sustainability. So Chairman, today, our debt is unsustainable. And the key question everyone else is asking is that how could we have a fiscal responsibility act? What set of rules? And yet our debt has become unsustainable. So I will take you through why we are where we are. So Chairman, the fiscal responsibility rule says that despite the fiscal policy indicators stated in Section 16 of the Public Financial Management Act 2016, Act 921, the following numerical fiscal responsibility rules shall apply in the management of the public finances. So Chairman, A, the overall fiscal balance on cash basis for a particular year shall not exceed a deficit of 5% of gross domestic product for that year. And B, an amount, an annual positive primary balance shall be maintained. So Chairman, this is clearly the fiscal responsibility rules for the Republic of Ghana. Section 4 of the Fiscal Responsibility Act, Act 982, says that Parliament may, in accordance with Article 9, Article 82 of the Constitution, pass a vote of censure on the minister where the minister breaches Section 2 of more than 1 percentage point. So Chairman, Section 2 says that the fiscal responsibility rule should not be more than 5%. So 1 percentage point in addition will mean you, any time you exceed it by 6%, a vote of censure may be presented to Parliament or somebody may trigger the vote of censure on you, may. So Chairman, again, Section 2 says that the primary balance must always be positive. So if you breach it by 1 percentage point, then obviously the vote of censure may trigger. What we have seen, what we have seen is that over the years, even though the Minister responsible for Finance has been presenting some economic data to Parliament. In the year 2018, Mr. Chairman, you can see it on the board. Our Minister responsible for Finance and the government had said to Parliament that the fiscal deficit was 3.9% of GDP. In fact, in the year 2018, the reason why they said it's 3.9% of GDP was that a key expenditure worth 8.9.8 billion Ghana cedis was excluded from the fiscal accounting. They were, they treated it below the line. And this has to do with the financial sector payment. So Chairman, fiscal deficit symbol means when your expenditure exceeds your revenue, exceeds your revenue, then you throw out the fiscal deficit. And the law says that any time you reach 6%, the vote of censure must happen. And this law was assented by His Excellency the President on 28th December 2018. So, Mr. Chairman, if you are to account for the 9.8 billion Ghana cedis that they excluded and treated it below the line, the actual fiscal deficit for the year 2018 was 7.1% of GDP. Clearly means that the censorship motion in line with, uh, Section, Section 4 of Act 982 triggers. And this is exactly three days after the law was assented to by the President. And the law, Mr. Chairman, has no transitional provision. So, so three days, three days. Uh, the, the law was passed on the 28th of December 2018 and by December 31st 2018, the minister has breached the fiscal responsibility rules already. So three days down the line. So Chairman, if I take you to 2019 also, our minister had informed Parliament that fiscal deficit was 4.8% of GDP, 4.8%. Again, he had excluded financial sector payment of 3.1%, uh, 3.1 billion Ghana cedis. And also had excluded energy payment, energy payment of 5.1, uh, 5.1 billion Ghana cedis from the fiscal accounting, from the fiscal accounting. So if you are to factor in all of that, the fiscal deficit is actually 7.1% of GDP, same as 2018. At the time, the fiscal rules had not been suspended, had not been suspended. And remember, the fiscal rules was suspended in the year 2020 when COVID came to our doorsteps. So at that point, the minister again breached the Fiscal Responsibility Act, particularly, particularly Section 2 and Section 4 of the Fiscal Responsibility Act. So Chairman, uh, in the year 2020, the deficit was 11.7, he claims, but the actual deficit as reported, if you factor in all what they have excluded, is 17.2% of GDP. The year 2022, 2021, the fiscal deficit as reported to Parliament was 9.2% of GDP. But the actual fiscal deficit for 2021 was 12.4% of GDP. So Chairman, let me take you to this energy payment. The minister.
But fair to the minister before he continue, with 2020, he came for suspension of the act. But I want you to follow the chronology of events. There were years he says, I'm suspending Fiscal Responsibility Act because of the circumstance of the situation, continue.
He could legally do that.
Yes, in fact, uh, Section 3, Section 3 of the Fiscal Responsibility Act is under suspension of the fiscal responsibility rules. And so he could suspend it, he did not suspend it in 18, did not suspend it in the year 2019, but suspended it in the year 2020. And there are circumstances that you can suspend it. So he used COVID and suspended that, we all agree. But prior to that, he did not suspend the fiscal responsibility rule. So he fell and was in breach of the Fiscal Responsibility Act. So Chairman, um, as I said, the minister excluded the following payment and this was given to us at the Finance Committee from the fiscal accounting. And this is summary of 2019 Energy Sector Payment Against Supplementary Applications. So Chairman, this is a document from the Ministry of Finance that they gave to us. The, uh, I have the document here and I'm tendering it, um, obviously as the ranking member of the committee. So I have a copy, I will tender it to you, but I'm referring to the whole document. So when I finish, I'll give it to you. So Chairman, in the document before us, the document before us.
A minute, uh, can we start labeling this as evidence?
Yes, yes.
Yes. Yeah, so, yes, you're doing that.
Yes, but, 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 Mr. Chairman, they made certain payment worth 5.1 billion Ghana cedis, energy payment. They made certain payment worth 5.1 billion Ghana cedis, energy payment. Uh, first to Ameri Energy, an amount of 530 million. Second to Letasko, Letasko, 500 million. AXA Energy, 359. Carpower, million, everything is a million. Carpower, 656. You have Sonan Asagre, 519 million. And then TMG Trusties Limited, uh, which is fuel from ENI Vitol. Uh, amounting to 1 billion and 860 million. And then they pay Stratcom Energy, 631 million. GNPC for 2018 refund for heavy fuel oil, an amount of 86.4 million. So Speaker, uh, Mr. Chairman, this gives you a total of 5.1 billion Ghana cedis. All of this were treated below the line. Simple put, they did not include it in the expenditure to see the overall deficit for the period. So Chairman.
Wait, wait, bear with me. Can you help the committee by indicating one of these particular, um, power, uh, companies, power, no, the generators? Let's, uh, what were they, um, uh, installed? What were they installed in the country?
Mr. Chairman, uh, my job is not to know what they installed. But I know the government of Ghana paid this money and treated it as amortization.
It's fine, uh, but it would have helped us.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, just to let you know that some, most of them there are for the purposes of buying fuel. And to power the power plant. For example, the amount that was paid to Letasko is fuel.
Come now, what I'm saying is that you say it's not your job, but I'm just wondering if you could posit it properly. Yes, you are concerned with the figures. I sitting here, I'm interested in when this equipment, uh, were installed in the country. If you have no idea, that's fine.
I have no idea, I have no idea, yeah.
And, and to be fair to the Honorable Atu Fosin, the, um, evidence being presented. Relates to payments that were made.
Yeah.
At a specific point in time.
I appreciate that, but question was simply if he knew when this machine, machinery, um, were installed. Uh, if you don't know, that's fine. I, I thought some of them, most of them were installed at the time when he was the Deputy Minister, but that's.
Mr. Chairman, I, 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 I'm not an IPP expert.
It's by the by, don't worry.
Uh, I deal with numbers, I'm giving you the numbers.
And the payments were not made at the time he was Deputy Minister.
Mr. Chairman, this payment were made in the year 2019. Uh, so many years after I left the Ministry of Finance, this was actually made by this government.
You had installed those, uh, machinery, didn't they?
So Mr. Chairman, um, to take you through it. Um, obviously, this was excluded to create impression that. The Minister Responsible for Finance had actually met the fiscal responsibility rules. So Mr. Chairman, let me now refer you.
About proportion.
Let me now refer you.
You may want to, uh.
No, I, I still need the document.
You still need it.
Uh, I still need it, I, I will tender it, I have tendered the Energy Sector Payment 2019 in evidence. But I have, I still need the, okay, maybe I can tear it and give it to you.
No, no, if, if you want to, if you want to tender it in whole, that is fine.
I will tender the presentation to you in evidence. So Chairman, the, um, next point had to do the same misreporting to Parliament. I have with me the Article 9, Article 4. Consultation Report from the International Monetary Fund, the IMF, dated December 2019. And Mr. Chairman, let me refer you to Paragraph 16.
Wait, before you do, what, what is that, what is that?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, uh, Ghana is a member of the International Monetary Fund. Every country IMF, every country that happens to be a member of the International Monetary Fund. Has to open their books once a year to the IMF. To see the reporting of how the country's economy is going. Because, Mr. Chairman, the truth is, we're in a global world. If care is not taken and you allow a country's economy to crash. It will become a global issue for global community to take care of that particular company, uh, uh, country. And so the IMF, per their mandate, as given to them by the United Nations. Is to ensure that once a year, they visit countries that are members. And I, I'm, I'm sure that every country is a member of the IMF. And then you, they will come and see your books and report appropriately. This report has to go through the IMF for, uh, IMF Board for approval. So Mr. Chairman, in the year 2019, the IMF undertook an Article 4 mission in Ghana. And as part of the document that they published on their website. And I've sent that link to this website to the clerk. I provided a link to the clerk. So Chairman, Paragraph 16, Paragraph 16, page 11, page 11, Paragraph 16. Of the staff report, um, uh, Article 4 says. Fiscal rules, uh, under Ghana Public Financial Management Act. Fiscal rules could be strengthened, box 1. It goes on to say that about 2.8 percentage point of GDP in financial and energy sector payments. Were recorded below the line in the year 2019 budget. Because the government considers the financial sector costs as one of, and energy cost as debt amortization. Best international practices would include this transaction above the line. Best international practices would include these transactions above the line. As they reflect either direct government obligation. Or government transactions transfers to state-owned enterprises. In addition, spending on roads into bracket cocoa board. And potential infrastructure collateralization on box site export, Sino-Hydro. Should be recorded in the central government budget. Finally, a former debt anchor targeted as sustainable debt to GDP ratio. Over the medium term could effectively guide the fiscal policy and reduce uncertainty about the debt trajectory. So Chairman, the point.
So we get the notes right. Um, the IMF is not by that saying that it was wrong what they did. They said that best international practices would have ensured that it was done in a different way. But that's not said what they was done was wrong.
Uh, Mrs. Chairman, I'm, I'm coming there, I, I, I'm, I'm building a point, so allow me to finish. When I build my point, you, you understand where I'm coming from. So, Mr. Chairman, this is the point that the IMF made in the 2019 Article 4 consultation.
You come back there, you haven't answered my question.
No, no, I'm, I'm building a point, so let me finish and I'm sure when I'm done, you can. If you want to close examine me, you can, but I just want so that I don't lose my thoughts. So, Mr. Chairman, the.
I won't worry if you lose a bit of it.
So Chairman, the, the key point here is that. An expenditure worth 2.8% of GDP was excluded from the fiscal reporting. Because government treated it differently, treated it differently against the international best practices. So Chairman, expenditure of 2.8%. So, Mr. Chairman, if you are to factor that expenditure in, clearly the fiscal rules was breached. So Chairman, the, the other point, the other point had to do with the fact that.
Honorable Atu Fosin, did you say 2.8% of GDP?
Yeah, of, of GDP. And I've given you the nominal numbers of GDP. So Chairman, the key point also is that Sino-Hydro payment was also excluded from the fiscal reporting. Government treated it differently. And so even though the Sino-Hydro payment is due for payment, the debt repayment is due next year. Now, because of the way they treated it as if it's not part of central government debt. How are we going to service the debt because already not part? And if you use taxpayers' money to service it, the accounting will mean that. You have not recorded the expenditure and now you are paying for something that you have not recorded. Clearly, this is dishonest and we believe that this shouldn't be the case. So Chairman, after 2019, in the year 2020, in the year 2020. Government of Ghana had gone to the IMF to get some loan. And the loan is called the Rapid Credit Facility, Rapid Credit Facility. And under the Rapid Credit Facility, before you go to the IMF, you have to give them the economic data. And I refer you to page 3, page 3 of the Rapid Credit Facility document at the IMF website. At the IMF website. And page 3, there is a box there called Table 1, Table 1. The government of Ghana gave this document to IMF, the source is Ghana Government Authorities. So Chairman, government has said to IMF that in the year 2018, the fiscal deficit was 7%. And not 4.8% as they told us. So in one bread, they had said to government, the Parliament of Ghana, that is 4.8%. In another bread, in government official document, they said to us that the fiscal deficit. They said to IMF, the fiscal deficit overall deficit was 7% of GDP. Acknowledging that the energy payment and financial sector payment were expenditure. So Chairman, in the year 2019, they had informed IMF again in the Rapid Credit Facility. That the fiscal deficit is 7.5% of GDP. 7.5% of GDP, breaching the fiscal responsibility rules. This is what they gave, so Chairman, I tender this in evidence, tender this in evidence. And then the 2019 one. Now, I will take you to 2020 staff report, 2021 staff report. The 2021 staff report, staff, IMF staff report. Also acknowledges that the fiscal deficit for 2018 was 7%. The fiscal deficit for 2021 is 7.5%. So clearly, the fiscal responsibility rules were breached in the year 2018 and 2019. So if you ask me, uh, the.
The Honorable Atu Fosin, uh, you've referred to two separate documents.
Yes.
Uh, would you want to tender them in evidence?
Yes, I'm tendering all of them in evidence.
Okay, so let, let them be tended to the, uh, the clerk of the committee. Yes, Honorable Pate Guama.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm not done.
You know, I think he, he has a.
I think it's very important to have those documents well numbered. Because the way, the way he's speaking and tendering in document, we need to have a clear view of what he's tendering.
That the clerk was taking charge of that. Yeah, yes, you have written them properly, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, so, um.
We didn't hear you, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, we are doing that.
So you can allay his fears.
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, the 2021 Article 4 consultation document. Uh, from the IMF, also, uh, in page 3, page 3 of the document also made this point very clear. That the fiscal deficit for the year 2019 was 7.5% of GDP. And the primary balance, uh, 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 is 7.5, negative, is, is 7.5% of GDP. And not as reported by the Minister Responsible for Finance to Parliament, representing 4.8% of GDP. So clearly, it was breached. So Chairman, the second fiscal rule has to do the primary, uh, primary balance. We were told that under the rules, if you exceed the deficit, uh, the, the balance by 1%. Because it's supposed to be positive at all times. Under the document that they submitted to IMF, the primary balance was negative 1 point, uh, negative 1.8. So there was a deficit of 1.8. And that is why we are saying that the train for the censorship motion moved in the year 2018. In fact, if you are to go by it, somebody could have brought the motion to censure the minister in the year 2018. Or 2019 because he breached the rules. And, and, and to my surprise, these are rules that were set by the minister himself. When, uh, this, this bill, he brought the bill to Parliament for a reason. The reason is to ensure fiscal sustainability and debt sustainability. If you breach these rules, it has long-term repercussion on the Ghanaian economy. And today, we are seeing what is happening. So Chairman, I tender this one to in evidence, I tender this one to in, in evidence. Chairman, um, I have said.
Say, Mr. Coach, you see our handicap, even those of us here, you see our handicap. You tell us about the law, you tell us about the provisions, we have no.
No, I, I have copies of the law I can give to you, I can give you copies of the law.
So that's the point that counsel for the Finance Minister raised originally. If we had acceded to that, everybody would have copies of what we're talking about. So we'll be able to put you on the spot if you, uh, give us a bit of tips.
The, the, uh, item on motion, um, on the motion item 5 deals with fiscal recklessness.
So the Honorable Atu Fosin, you finish with.
I'm down with item 4.
With item 4.
Item 4.
So you're, you're now moving to item.
Item 5.
Item 5.
Mr. Coach, I think we should stick to the original plan. Uh, our colleagues want to ask questions, you put all of them together, I think they might lose their, uh, train of thought.
Okay, so if you can ask questions on item, item 4, and then I move on to item 5.
I think that's a better way of going about it, yes.
Uh, very well.
Yeah.
The Honorable Mesa.
Chairman, thank you very much for the opportunity. Uh, I want to find out from the Honorable Ranking Member whether he knows Dr. Abet Tuna Mama.
Of course, um, Abet Tuna Mama works, used to work with the IMF in this country as the Ress Rep, Resident Representative. So it's an IMF staff that often meets the Finance Committee.
Chairman, I want to find out from the Ranking Member again whether he's aware that on the 9th of May 2020. All these allegations that he's recounted were flatly denied by the said Dr. Abet Toma Mama on Joy News File.
So Chairman, I am making reference to documents published by the IMF Board, official document. Tuna Mama is not the IMF Board, he's not IMF, he's an individual who works with IMF. His views are his views. I am ref, my references are official document from the IMF and you can get it from the IMF website. I'm not aware that IMF website is stronger than Joy News website.
Mr. Coach, I'm, no, uh, let's, let's get to it. He asked a straightforward question, are you aware, A, B, C, yes or no, I think that's all he was asking for.
I said, I'm not aware that the IMF website.
No, he did, that wasn't his question. His question was, are you aware that Mr. Ture Mama, whatever he said, made this? Did you, did you, have you?
And, 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 Chairman, I am not aware.
Thank you.
Chairman, indeed, they said Mr. Dr. Toma Mama was the IMF Country Rep for Ghana. And he was called on news file. To respond to allegations that had been made by the Honorable Ranking Member and the minority. Respect to misreporting of figures that the Finance Ministry had presented to the IMF. And he was categorical that all the figures that the minority were alluding to. Were known to the IMF and that the government of Ghana had not misrepresented any figures to the IMF as he's alleging today. I put it to him.
But, Mr. Chairman, um, I, I vehemently disagree with what he put out there. Globally, 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 countries report on the fiscal with a manual. So Chairman, I will share the manual with you and I think I have a copy with the manual, I brought a copy. I'll give you the manual. And, um, the manual indicates how countries, uh, deals with their, deals with the issues of. Debt reporting or fiscal reporting. So Chairman, in the case of currently, the world is using Government Finance Statistics Manual 2014. Government Finance Statistics Manual 2014. And this manual is not alien to government of Ghana. Ghana has been reporting our fiscal in line with this manual since Adam. I'm surprised that all of a sudden, the reporting has changed to something that is not globally accepted. And that is why the IMF in their own document had said. That best practices recognize that this should be treated above the line. And this is in line with the manual. So Chairman, I shared the manual, it's a very bulky document. Since we are now in paperless regime, I don't want to waste money and print it. So, Mr. Chairman, I will share the soft copy with your clerk now. This is a document that deals with how reporting should be. It is not for someone to show us how the reporting should be. It is a global manual and everybody abides by that.
We, we have copies of the transcript, we'll be giving another opportunity to.
A look and of course, obviously, the Finance Minister, he's also, yeah, with his lawyers, so obviously, yeah, listen.
Very well, thank you, I, I'll leave it there for now, yeah, I'll leave it there for you.
The Honorable Kwame, you may do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Honorable Atu Fosin, would you be kind enough to turn to the paragraph before this one? Yeah, by what, I want to find out what is the source of this document?
Um, if you may, I have the budget statement before me, so I'll take you through the budget statement one by one. And refer you to the budget statement where the source is coming from. So Chairman. So Chairman, to start with, let me start with the twenty eighteen budget statement.
Is this an extract from the budget and which year's budget?
Okay, every single thing, every single data is coming from government official document, coming from budget statement. And, Mr. Chairman, you agree with me that when I said fiscal data from the Ministry of Finance website? So whilst we are here, I have access to internet, I can take you to Ministry of Finance website now and point to where all these numbers are, where I picked them from. So we can do that right away and you can know exactly where it's coming from.
Let's deal with the question on the top of your head, without taking us through the tone you are talking about. Are you able to tell us twenty eighteen, two eleven point whatever, twenty one nine whatever? Are you able to tell us this is from here, this is from here? If you can't, that's okay, can you tell us?
Yeah, I can, the deficit as reported in the year eleven point six at three point nine is in the twenty nineteen budget and the media review of twenty nineteen. If you are to look at the appendix three C and two C of the budget statement of twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen media review and the budget, these numbers are there for everybody to see, appendix two C and three C of the budget statement. Again, the financial sector-
Who should finish what?
I thought he was explaining- Question that I asked, is this data something that Honorable Atufosin had prepared or it is already part of an existing official document? That's what I want to find out. I ask the question because you actually color some places with red and white noise and you are using this document to contradict the finance minister's position. So we must know the source of this document, whether it's coming from you or it's an official document. That's why I-
To start with, these documents are official numbers published by the government of Ghana. All what I did was to take those numbers and represent them in a manner for everyone to understand.
So this is your document?
So it is, it is my presentation, but the document, the numbers are coming from government official document. And I've made reference to the budget statement, appendix three C and two C of twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. And you can check them, I have copies of the budget statement here. If you want me to take you through, I will take you through. And you can also find these numbers in the ministry, on the Ministry of Finance website under fiscal data. Every year data is published by the state and it's there for everyone to see. So that is where I took the numbers from and these are official numbers. The ones that I have colored is to show clearly that what the government of Ghana reported and the red to show what they should have reported. Because, for example, the energy payment, they treated it as amortization. Amortization simple means debt repayment. How could you repay a debt and this debt where this, that that's supposed to reduce your debt in a lot of ways?
I guess that's what this point is really, wait a minute, it's a point where did these numbers come from? I think he is quite happy with that.
I think I'm happy to hear from you that they are your numbers, even though you extracted them from other documents. That's it, that's the answer I got from him. If you would want to-
Let's be fair with our colleague, I'm not sure that's the point he's making. He's saying that even though-
He says that these documents are his presentation and that he had extracted the numbers from other documents.
Well, I guess what is important, what is important is that he says these numbers though are presented here by him and not his numbers. He said they managed from official, what is a borrow, he extracted them from government documents. I think he's got the documents over there, he referred us to those.
So also for your information, also for your information before he comes in, also for your information, the government's twenty twenty two budget, and that's before me, and the twenty twenty two media review, and let me refer you to twenty twenty two budget, appendix two C of the twenty twenty two budget, appendix two C of the twenty twenty two budget.
The appendix two C, two, three C.
Two C and three C.
Those are all from twenty twenty two, and yes.
So Chairman, appendix two C of the twenty twenty two budget, page two hundred and thirty four, page two hundred and thirty four, and other, under other expenditures. Governments had said that going forward from twenty twenty two, they are treating all energy payment and financial sector payment above the line, adding it to expenditure, conceding that what they did was wrong and going further, going forward, they are going to-
But that's your gloss, tell us, that's your gloss, tell us what is there, what is-
Chairman, what is here is that they have treated energy payment, energy payment of four point four billion and twenty four million as expenditure. The same energy payment once upon a time, they said it's not expenditure and they should treat it as amortization. They have changed their position, moved it from amortization now to expenditure. After we raised the issue, now they are saying that they are going to conduct, that's what you-
No, Honorable Members, to be fair to the witness, we would have an opportunity to evaluate the evidence presented. We should not, as a committee, be asking questions that sound as if we are bugging the witness. We should, we should ask questions arising out of the presentation in a manner that elicits the information for our evaluation as evidence before the committee. Honorable Kwame, you may do.
He's laughing because, yeah, I'm not, I'm not-
Of the sponsors of this motion. You are part of the sponsors of the motion.
You are kidding, you are kidding my friend of-
It's a few minutes, it's a few minutes ago.
Coach, Chairman of what, of what?
We should be very careful.
Drop that, drop that, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I ask the questions to understand him better.
I appreciate that.
You actually make, I don't want to, I want to refrain from using the word allegation and by your choice of words, what was it, that the grounds that you are making and the grounds you are making you-
Why not, why not go on with the next question? Yeah, go, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I will do that, but again, you also say that the finance minister exceeded the fiscal deficit by two point eight of the, two point eight percentage point of the GDP. And your grounds for saying that, where do you have the figures or is there any official figure that shows that the finance minister had actually exceeded it by two point eight?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I may refer you to the documents before us. In the budget statement, if you look at appendix three C, the same budget statement, the same budget statement, appendix three C, which year are you making reference, twenty nineteen? Okay, so which one is that? Mr. Chairman, first of all, to start with, in the twenty nineteen budget, the minister had reported to us in paragraph ninety nine, page twenty three, that the fiscal deficit is three point seven percent of GDP for the year twenty eighteen. This is according to the minister's document. So Chairman, if you go to the same budget statement, the budget statement, the energy sector payment, instead of him treating it above the line, what he did was, he showed it below the line, clearly excluding it from the expenditure. So an amount of nine point eight billion Ghana-
That isn't his question, you've taken us through all of that already. There was a point where you said that there was some two point eight percent-
Of GDP, that's where I'm, that is where I'm going. For example, in the year twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen, the minister had reported to Parliament that the fiscal deficit is four point eight percent of GDP. The IMF had said that per their standards, the world standard, the fiscal deficit is supposed to be seven point five percent of GDP. In the staff report, they had said to us that two point eight percent of GDP were excluded from the expenditure. When they asked the government, the government treated them differently. One, he treated the energy payment as amortization, debt repayment, but it's not debt repayment, it's an expenditure.
Where, in which document are you getting this from?
So the document is the budget statement.
Okay.
It is in the budget statement, appendix two B, two C and three C.
Okay.
Under below the line expenditures, the amount is there clearly.
That's fine.
And nobody can run away from it. So if you want me to point the numbers to him, I can point them to him if he has a copy of the budget statement.
You're right, yeah, go on.
So your last question and then we can move to the next Honorable Member.
Am I limited to three questions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, preliminary objection to the way this committee is conducting business. We are open to cross-examination and you can evaluate the evidence we are submitting to you, but let this committee be reminded of the exact words in Article eighty two four, it says, states, and I quote, "A minister of states in respect of whom a vote of censure is debated under clustery of this article is entitled during the debate to be heard in his defense." The motion we move is not against any member of this committee, so we expect him to hear and defend himself. If this committee is reducing itself to doing that, let us know.
Wait a minute, reducing itself to doing what?
I'm just reminding the committee of articulated two four-
Wait a minute, this committee is reduced, Aaron, this committee is reducing itself to doing what? No, no, we didn't hear you, it wasn't clear. Aaron, behave yourself, what have you been, what is that? All right, we overruled you there. So your next question.
Mr. Chairman, Honorable Atufosin, kindly permit me, I'm not an accountant, neither am I a finance person, but you suggest that the minister, improving your point, you are saying that there were some reports that the minister had reported above the line and then he actually brought it below the line. I think you said, instead of being above the line, he brought it below the line, right? I may want you to explain that, but the question that I want to ask is that, does it necessarily suggest that the minister is dishonest if an item is reported below the line?
Thank you very much.
Is that what you want the committee to believe in?
I think you have, you have really asked a very good question. Mr. Chairman, the key point here is, the statistics are there for a reason. The reason is you don't add to the debt unnecessarily or you don't add to the debt at levels that the country will see debt overhang. Our problem today is as a result of high debt, nothing more, that has triggered everything else. What I've done here is to track how this debt became debt, the fiscal part. When the minister, if the minister had been honest with us by showing us what the fiscal deficit was, I'm sure Ghana would have remedied the situation long ago. The problems we are in today-
That's all your view, the question of honesty and dishonesty on that, that's your view.
He asked me a question about honesty and I'm, I have to answer.
All right.
So I'm answering his question. So, so we are where we are because he was not upright with us.
Sabine, you wanted to answer a question, get on with it.
Chairman, my question has not been answered.
My thought-
Will be kind enough. What I want to find out, he would want the committee to believe that instead of going above the line, it has come below the line. And I'm asking whether it suggests that the minister is being dishonest? Is it the guideline of the IMF that should be used at all levels?
Mr. Chairman-
You want a yes or no answer for me?
Let me answer this question before, Mr. Chairman, let me, come in.
The chairman decided if we yield to the minority leader, he can't yield to you.
Chairman-
Oh, you're taking it to yourself, you're yielding it to yourself.
Honorable, I may do, I have to take it, thank you.
Right, Mr. Chairman, the statistics are there for a reason. That is why we have a law called Fiscal Responsibility Act.
So I think you are not being fair to us.
No, no, Mr. Chairman, he asked the question.
That he's been honest or dishonest, why can't you do what?
Mr. Chairman, I have to build a point. And my point is that, yes, he has been dishonest.
Full stop, let's go.
He has been dishonest because it would have triggered the fiscal responsibility as section four and it would have been such a-
He will speak for himself, so.
Chairman, just on the same question, to answer the Honorable, I may do.